I will call the June tenth regular town council meeting to order, please rise. Let's just.
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands on mission under God into this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we have two proclamations for tonight. First one is for pride love. Whereas the town of Tallinn is a welcoming inclusive community and an exceptional place to live, work and raise a family. And whereas the town of Tallinn recognizes the importance of equality, justice and freedom for all. And whereas the United States honors the nineteen sixty-nine Stonewall uprising and first Pride March in New York City in June nineteen seventy. Americans coming together to remember the courage and accomplishments made over multiple generations to advance the rights of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender and queer people. And whereas our LGBTQ neighbors who work in town or business, live in our community or raise a family here are integral part of Tallinn's population. And whereas the town of Tallinn strives to make our town one where LGBTQ residents can thrive with dignity and protection and the opportunity to live their their most open, authentic lives. And whereas the town of Tallinn acknowledges rising challenges and threats to LGBTQ rights, representation, respect for farers, continuous education, awareness and compassion and prejudice and discrimination. And whereas it is vital our youngest residents, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, feel seen, safe, supported and empowered by their peers, educators and community leaders. And whereas Tallinn is proud to support and protect the civil rights of the LGBTQ community as a part of our community's collective freedoms. And therefore, the Tallinn Town Council, on behalf of the citizens of Tallinn, claims June twenty twenty-five as Pride Month. A witness thereof, I have hereto set my hand and cause a seal of the town of Tallinn to be affixed on this June tenth, two thousand twenty-five. That one, and we also have. Sure it's in my packet, but I do have another copy here um for Flag Day, which is this Saturday. Uh that I will read. Whereas the flag of the United States has fifty stars for each of the fifty states and thirteen stripes for each of the thirteen original colonies. And whereas the blue field represents vigilance, perseverance and justice. And whereas the white stripes represent purity and innocence. And whereas the red stripes represent hardiness and valor. And whereas the flag is the most prominent widespread symbol of our nation. And whereas soldiers, sailors and airmen have been inspired by it and have rallied under it since the War for Independence, including the United States Army, which celebrates its two hundred fiftieth anniversary on this June fourteenth. And whereas on that same date, June fourteenth, seventeen seventy-seven, the Second Continental Congress voted on Black Resolution, the young nation's very proud flag. And whereas this flag has changed over the course of many years as the nation has grown, it still remains an enduring symbol of the American spirit. Now therefore, the Tallinn Town Council, on behalf of the citizens of Tallinn, proclaims June fourteenth, twenty twenty-five as Flag Day. A witness whereof, I have hereto set my hand, cause the seal of the town of Tallinn to be fixed on this June tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Go. First proclamations we've had in a little while. Um. Same track my agenda. Public participation, I should know that. So um you'll go to public participation, uh the three month limit on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council. Uh go to the room first.
Start. Okay, Star Gerger, it's Lisa Lane. I came tonight to uh talk about the importance of Pride Month here in Tallinn and I actually found it uh. Maybe appropriate that the Pride Month and the Flag Day proclamations were both read tonight. Uh because unfortunately, the flag, which is a very important symbol of our country, something we actually just do at the start of this meeting. Uh there's a lot of different flags that people find identify very closely with them. As a matter of fact, I brought in some. So uh I did bring in a variety of different pride flags tonight. If you guys are interested in them, you're welcome to them. The rest are gonna go to the uh here, you can pass it around, see if you can do the last one. Uh the rest go to the uh GSA club. Um later this month, my kids to bring in, but I did bring a variety of them that some people feel identify closely with them. So I just wanted to thank town council for the Pride Month proclamation. Uh and mention how important it is that we continue to support this community, the LGBTQ plus community, especially uh based on the attacks that are happening to various people in the community uh from from our federal government. Uh I was lucky enough to participate in the pride event that happened at the state Capitol last week. Where a number of our state uh elected representatives um participated and talked to residents and other legislators about the importance of the LGBTQ plus community. Uh there were several key pieces of legislation that passed this year to support our community, including some efforts to protect our shield laws, uh some efforts to protect LGBTQ plus folks in nursing homes um and other key pieces of legislation. So thank you uh for making sure that this is recognized here in Tallinn. It's important to my family. It's important to me and I think it's important to our whole community. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go online. Not seeing anyone online, I'll go back to the room. Uh yes?
Hi, I'm very good. Uh Georgia, which officially in the room, sorry. If I've heard this story for me many times before, but now that the budget's passed, so we're pulling out once again. Uh being a fixed income, I got a total of twenty-two dollars and eighty cents this year in total security. Let me think, if is my taxes going up twenty-two dollars and eighty cents? Hmm, probably not. Two hundred and twenty-eight, probably not. About four fifty-six, probably closer to it. Um so in that, my taxes are going up fifteen, twenty percent more than my income this year. Just for the town. I think it's time to get serious about raising the limit of what people qualify for tax assistance. The numbers we have now are ridiculous. I know a lot of people in town and very few of them are, you know, a lot worse off than me, do not qualify for tax assistance. We need at least a, if not a hundred percent increase, at least a fifty percent increase. We need to get those numbers up. Because the taxes are running away from people's income and yet your assistance is not keeping up. So please let's uh get some serious consideration this year to our increase, to an increase in helping people on fixed income, not just seniors. A lot of people in town are on fixed incomes.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll go back online. Seeing anyone online, go back to the room. Yeah.
Well, I'm from the Murray. This is Elaine Talk packet. That's like to perform a poem that I, a student at Tallinn Girl School, wrote in class and it's to honor Pride Month. Before you even see me, you check my label. Am I black? Am I an immigrant? Am I queer? Am I poor? Am I disabled? Am I different? These words are shown at skin like products on a shelf, like price tags in a line or specimen in a lab. People are stuck with these labels. Those who wear the labels can't change them, just have to wear them. Society is the CEO handing out labels like uniforms and judgments like paychecks. But when you look at someone, do you see them or do you see their label? When you look at yourself, do you see you or do you see your label? Do you see anything? Or is it the label that you see? I am done being a label. You're, I'm done having you define who I am. I am not a label. I am not your mixed up version of me. Not your watered down, boxed up version of who I am. I write my name big, bold and loud. I am everything you said I couldn't be. I am me.
Go online. Seeing anyone online, go back to the room.
Becky Murray, this morning, um with today's announcement of next year's musical, I led to press the importance of funding the Board of Education. Um with the allocated funding for education, they had to make cuts, not pay automatically paying from state. So now, many of my clubs are up here, if they're gonna happen next year. Same thing like the gym, uh gym teacher at high school getting cut. That means less people that wanna take gym as a class will be able to do that. There's gonna be a nurse getting cut. That means that there's not gonna be a nurse sitting in the nurse's office at all times. That means that during five or four meeting or something, or when the nurse is on their lunch break, nobody's gonna be in there in the nurse's office tending to issue, minor issues. This is not acceptable. More education should have more. Thank you.
Yep. Go back online. Go back to the room. Back online. Back to the room. Back online one more time. Room one more time. Close out public participation.
Can I just take the extra flags that weren't?
Uh yes, I think they're right by.
So I'm just gonna give them to the GSA. I know you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to items. That brings us to item six, public hearing items, which we have none. Um which then brings us to item seven eight, which is reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. Um we have had uh at least one committee, we think it's Wells Task Force, um did meet last week. Um. I I know it's an executive session, I don't know what we can share in this venue, what would be appropriate, but.
Um not a lot from that meeting.
But we're continuing to talk about the issue at both the vineyards and uh certain areas and also the few heights areas, so. That's ongoing, I guess.
Definitely some good progress.
Yeah, yeah, it was an encouraging meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and when it makes sense that we get to give a council an update, I don't know. It's not even when that would be, but it was encouraging.
Yeah.
Um the updates from E H H D or CROG.
I don't have any, no, so, okay.
Great, um that's all for boards and committees, so we'll go to town council liaisons. Um let's go, or did you have something to say?
No, I was just gonna say we need this.
Oh yeah, so.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Obviously, don't know. Let me talk about yesterday, assume assume that the chief met with town manager, I don't know if I could, you know that, that she's met with town manager and Megan about priorities that I have stuck to me. I don't know if Brian gave you an update.
No, he didn't give me.
Alright, I think that's what's, we're gonna talk about that. I was guessed.
Okay.
That's, that's what we left, that, that's what we left as.
Right, right, that's what, yeah, so I haven't seen anything um come through the email yet?
No, neither have I.
Yeah, okay.
I, I don't rush Megan, she's usually pretty on top of.
Right.
We have a ball tomorrow.
So yeah, I'm hoping to, I'm hoping we get a good presentation and input.
Yeah. Anyways, but that's what we have.
Okay. You're still not gonna be under contract for a little while, right? Couple of months probably before you figure it out?
I think so, because I, we have to set the priorities first, because there are so many things on ours in the budget. And it's gonna be the most critical items, especially with the BIC study. Talking about the central fire station, some, whenever that's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Sink a lot of money into, but I can just.
Yeah, so the whole point of the the meeting, chief's meeting was to develop uh prioritize a list of of needs and then
Right.
focus the budget on those, on those, that priority list.
Okay.
And I think there's some issues, maybe at three forty that we might really.
Yeah.
But we talked about the last council.
Yeah.
So hopefully we get enough feet on that as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um so I'll go to town council liaisons, I'll go to councillor Butler first, 'cause she's online, then we'll go around the circle. Councillor Butler, is any um liaison reports for you today?
None, PCC doesn't meet until this Thursday, um but I will comment that they did an excellent job with the Memorial Day celebration. Um so we'll see what they say about uh if they had any snags and then they'll begin planning for the fall, I'm assuming um at this next meeting.
Great, thank you. Uh councillor Moonin?
Yeah, so just wanted to give uh a big thank you to the Tallinn Veterans Mission. Um more of the parade was gen-tastic. Um we were able to finally get the plaque up on the flagpole base. Um you know, that took a little bit just finding the correct insignia for Space Forest, that was newly added. Um so that looks beautiful out there and they did a fantastic ceremony after. Um and the Tallinn, uh the Tallinn Conservation Commission Corps um this past Sunday was working at former uh Kendall Mountain Conservation. You know, removing fallen logs from the trails, trail overgrowth was trimmed back. Um so we thank them for that as well, so.
Thank you. Not going on. Uh councillor Gudicheck?
I'm sure the um recreation advisory board met last night, which was Bruce Wap's last night. Kind of well, but we didn't have a forum, but um there was a little bit of a cam, we can't really talk too much or anything, but it's more of a discussion. So Jim Moore, um Chris Welch um came to discuss a potential flag football organization for youth. Um I believe they did also a lot with football, just don't think the timing is probably good because with Bruce departed and that takes some organization, but it sounds really great. It's it's under it has a name under the lights franchise. They have uh everything that they need, it's just they would have to figure out the field and they would want to do a pilot pretty quickly and just wasn't the right time. And so hopefully, it was recommended, maybe look at some other towns, but I hope I think Tallinn, 'cause I think display football is becoming a big thing, especially with uh girls.
It's a, it's a league, not a, it's not like they wanna build a field or.
They don't wanna build a field. It's like another recreation, like youth football, cheer, that kind of thing. It would be youth um flag football.
Okay.
So non-contact, I guess, is becoming a really big sport. Um I think they said it's actually an Olympic sport now, I don't know, 'cause of the final concussions and stuff like that. So it was pretty interesting. Um but other than that, we're trying to discuss anything else on the agenda. Um but that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh councillor Ryan?
Uh I don't have any updates. The historic district commission meets next Wednesday.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning commission met last night. Um there was a special permit hearing and then um there were uh was a lot of discussion about the two eight dash twenty-four referrals. Uh which I believe we'll be probably reviewing and will be coming to us in a, in the next meeting. It's, but I don't believe it's on this agenda um at this time. Uh but there was a bit, a bit of a discussion there, so um the next hearing, next meeting will have a public hearing on um proposed modifications for uh residential subdivision or residential regulations, the entire residential zone for real lot size and access um as well as frontage, which is a significant difference for the town. So I would encourage um the commissioners and people to uh take a look at that and and uh weigh in on that.
Thank you. Eight dash twenty-four's referral, is that also the sidewalk?
Yeah, so those are, that was a sidewalk, um that was the sidewalk on one ninety-five and it was also a uh uh eight dash twenty-four referral for solar panels on Old Close Place, the former Parker School.
Okay, okay, thank you. What, oh go ahead, sorry. Was there, I I don't expect details, was there a general sort of?
So there was, so there were, I, the both referrals were positively referred to us with comments.
Okay.
Um the the comments were largely related not to the um land use issues um but to things like fiscal issues, financial issues. Um maintenance issues, um policies at the state of Connecticut for clearing snow and things like that with respect to the sidewalk, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um the Economic Development Commission met uh last week. Um they had a couple of things going on. Uh they heard from potential buyers for the uh three oh three Merrill Road or Here at property. I'm looking to convert the site into a combination of a micro data center, self-storage facility and contractor base, so.
Okay.
Lot going on. Um but they might come back to the council to seek a tax abatement potentially in August, so I'm worried to come up on that one. Um also, they complete, they're planning to um right back up, they completed an economic development plan, which they're going to present to planning and zoning um over the summer and then probably bring to town council late summer, so.
Awesome.
Um a lot of good work going on.
Awesome, that's great.
Yeah.
Good news.
Yeah. Um I think I'm not missing anything, so we'll move on to uh new business. Um item eight one is consideration and action on a suspense tax list for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, so turn it over to Mike and remember he has.
Yeah, so periodically we uh bring the suspense list to you, um Aaron, or let the tax collectors here as Yulita, so uh if you wanna add anything to that, Aaron.
Yeah, I'll just uh. Screw. Um thanks.
Good evening, everyone. Every June, the tax office reviews any motor vehicle and personal property bills that are three years delinquent. Currently, we are working with the twenty twenty grant list. At this point, we feel as though our collection tools and efforts have not been successful. And these taxes will no longer be considered an asset to the town, although the bills remain collectible for a total of fifteen years. We have searched for accurate addresses, sent delinquent statements and demands, blocked registrations at the DMV for motor vehicle bills, placed UCC means on delinquent personal property bills, given the state marshal the authority to collect on our behalf and have exhausted all means of collection for these bills. Our next step is to put the bills into suspense and give the collection agency the authority to collect on our behalf. Currently, we work with Taxor Capital Services LLC. Their services are at no extra cost to the town. They simply apply a fifteen percent fee on top of any taxes that they collect for us. I also just wanna mention that since switching to Taxor LLC roughly a year ago, they have been remarkably more successful in collecting on our suspense accounts than the collection agency we worked with previously. And we are very happy and impressed with their efforts. In the one year that we've been working with Taxor, they've collected over thirty-five thousand dollars for us, while our previous company only collected fifteen thousand in the previous ten years that we partnered with them. I have no doubt they will continue to do an outstanding job. The amount I suggest to be put into suspense is a total of forty-five thousand, eight oh four eighteen, with a total of a hundred and ten total accounts between motor vehicle and personal property bills. I thank you for your time and consideration on this matter.
Thank you. Um any questions from councillors? Yeah, councillor Ryan?
Um first, that's awesome that it sounds like the new collection agency we're working with is doing a great job. Getting some revenue for the town. Um just a practical question, so now that, you know, we put them on the suspense list, they're not counted as part of like the town's assets?
So it's, it, but they're still collectible for fifteen years total, but after three years of exhausting our collection tools.
Yep.
We pass it on to a collection agency. They have, they have better tools at finding accurate addresses for people. And you know, people get the letters and they want these bills to get paid, so it's just another enforcement and collection policies.
Thanks.
So.
Question two, so when we built the um budget that just passed, was this already taken out of the revenue calculations? Or does it have to be adjusted to?
Um so for
Oh, I think that is, yeah.
For the current budget, it's mostly based on the current motor vehicles and personal property and real estate bills that we're collecting on. That's what our percentage rate is based on. It doesn't really take into consideration prior.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So if I can interrupt.
Yeah, of course, yeah, well, um then we do budget the collection rate ninety-nine point one. We could put it budget just for the current year tax level. Then we look overall what we collected and we look at uh the past years, we just collected, you know, higher rate, but that's accounting everything.
Mm-hmm.
That makes sense. So we do budget for small fraction, what we can collect on these past new bills. And it's been successful, like Aaron mentioned, so it's in the budget, but that doesn't go against the budget that we developed earlier. For the delivery.
Thank you.
Yeah, so just to uh, 'cause Jacob was asking a question that I was, I think that I was trying to understand, so because like these that we're voting on, they have been um passed due for like three years or however long it's been. Those were already not being counted 'cause they were already, uh yeah.
Yeah.
And then we allow for, as you said, the ninety-nine point one collection rate to sort of allow for some amount of new bills that won't be paid. Is that sort of?
New grant list themselves.
New grant, yeah, 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 right, 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 okay, thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Um I don't know, I'm having a lot of trouble finding my materials, I've got all entertaining for a motion, so.
Oh, that's right.
Okay.
Sixteen, I I will uh make a motion uh as outlined in the agenda, yeah, item one, to approve the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five suspense list, the amount of forty-five, forty-five thousand, eight hundred, four dollars and eighteen cents.
Second, alright. Uh we're hybrid tonight, so we'll do a roll call vote. Uh councillor Butler?
Aye.
Councillor Moonin?
Aye.
Councillor Gudicheck?
Aye.
Councillor Ryan?
Aye.
Councillor Vivi?
Aye.
I'm an I as well, so that passes again, you see. Okay, um thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, uh now we'll go to item eight two, um which is establishment of a mill rate. Um so Mike, what's on, I don't know, you have anything to say?
Do you wanna take this one or?
You can, you don't start, I can add it.
So yeah, a- again, the budget recently passed, so part of that process to, it's a, to do the uh resolution to establish the mill rate, which is in here. Um as it mentions, it's a, the mill rate is twenty-seven point one nine mills um uh for real estate and uh personal property and twenty-seven point one nine mills for voted vehicles. Um. You wanna add to that? That's pretty good, yeah.
I mean, just to follow the standard process to the budget, so. Um entertaining motion for the resolution. So, okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we're discussing. Right, uh once again, we're hybrids, so we'll do a roll call vote. Councillor Butler?
Aye.
Councillor Moonin?
Aye.
Councillor Gudicheck?
Aye.
Councillor Ryan?
Aye.
Councillor Vivi?
Aye.
I'm an I as well, so the mill rate of twenty-seven point one nine is adopted. Right, moving right along to item three, consideration of establishing a dedicated fund for the educational tech, or education technology initiative project.
So Dr. Willet's here and Yulita, um I know that this needs to be established according to uh GASP guidelines, but I don't know if you wanna speak to it at all, Walter or Yulita?
Yeah, I um, you guys, you wanna give a little background of how we're right here or just kinda go into the, see what this generally.
Whatever you feel is appropriate. We're gonna do this.
So uh many years ago, the district engaged on an education technology issue. Ultimately, to catch the district up to what was going on with uh the world with respect to how uh the industry is shifting and um and paper textbooks, things like that are kind of going into, spading into the background. And most media today, the most companies today are selling products that are no longer textbooks. They're selling the textbook as an ancillary item, partially because they can make greater profits not having to develop some material items like books. You just use it as virtual items, so there's a market reason why it headed in that direction. Um but most of the needs for student learning and materials and things like that went virtual, went electronic, went the way of um, you know, these Chromebooks and these laptops and so on. So almost everything that we do today for reading is based on some software package. It's not uh with books anymore. On most of the social studies and other things like that, math, whether it's Bridges Program or other programs, they all have switched over to these virtual components, so because of that, um you know, most districts across the state have moved into having uh students using these Chromebooks and 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 typically it really only works if the kids have a Chromebook that they can use and carry around. So labs or laptops they use and carry around. So labs that we might have used as kids, you know, for somebody my age, and they might go into a lab to use the computers, those don't really exist anymore. Not in the way that they used to. The kids bring these laptops into the lab, so plug them into things and they integrate with each other. Uh they don't work on projects the way we used to work on projects where maybe you know, you would sit down and write your paper and someone else would write their paper. Today, they integrate together and they're writing papers at the same time in the same virtual space. Um projects are done after school together, uh whereas in the past, you know, maybe kids have to get to library and so on. Now, they they do it together virtually or um, you know, we share documents uh at the same time and space, but not in the same physical space. Um so it's 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 just evolved way far away from where we used to be. Um the expectations are different, kids, the projects are different, the way they have to integrate use technologies is different. What's expected in the world and industry is different. So, you know, basically textbooks are going the way to Dodo and these things are what are being used daily integrated with their curriculum and instruction. So years ago, that was launched and in COVID, it was absolutely crucial, obviously. And so um an educational technology initiative plan was put out many years ago that allowed, you know, this to happen for the district. But as any other technology cycle, there's a replacement cycle for these devices. And so um they get replaced in grades three, six and nine, and then the kids carry them through the school. And then what's left is used for parts. And so we take the things apart, we replace the screens with these. You know, we basically strip them of everything and use them to repair the ones that are still being utilized at the end of their cycle. So the high school have a four-year cycle, for instance, the social schools have about a three-year cycle, and then these get integrated into the repair cycle and replacement cycle. So that's a kind of long-winded introduction in some ways, shorter than others, about why and how we arrived here. Um and so this was offered to the council, as you may recall, as an opportunity. Um as we moved through the process of the budget and council and board moved in this direction, that a hundred and eighty-eight of this uh could be made a capital project or capital impact. And instead um of having the T M S auditorium seats, the educational reserve fund using end-of-year funds rolled over that were freed up in the third quarter of the coming fiscal year would be used for T M S auditorium seats. And by taking that off capital, this, one eighty-eight of these devices could go on a capital. And there's a number of places in the state, as well as what the state considers um to be capital uh items, that this would qualify. A number of places in the state have done this, um with these kinds of devices, it looks like it qualifies. And the town needed to create a special sort of accountable process for this, which is where we are today, with this particular fund being created.
Thank you. Um Yulita, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Um I can add, um I think uh this version had explained really well, and this is, it is part of a by two me six capital project. Uh we reach out to our auditors just to get their suggestion how the best to handle us, this is unique. And we did not have in the past handling these type of projects, a technology initiative. And it was suggested that we should uh keep it as a separate fund, which is an other, in financial view, at the fiscal year-end, if there's funds unspent, it will treat it like education reserve fund or gap. So it goes back like a general fund and then comes back. So it just keeping a separate item would be the best and clean process. Besides that, we do have to um keep as an asset and capitalize also, so part of it. So it it's just a clean way to keep it and track it.
You're creating a separate fund for this, for these monies to go in, and then
Yes.
Just the part you mentioned at the end, it's treated like the educational reserve fund, does that mean the money eventually falls back to the board of bed? Or is it more complicated than that?
No, it's just under gap purposes. If you're looking to add for it, there's a separate explanatory note where in the calculation for the gap expenditures and revenue, this is comes as a part of it, as a number. So it's just a gap basis for the construction, so it would be part of that explanatory supplement of report.
Okay.
I think we had a short discussion how gap can be complicated.
Yes.
That's the, that's the. Yes, that's.
Okay.
And just for the acronym for the people that haven't heard, um what gap is, if you could just ex- explain the acronym?
Yeah, general accounting uh account rule principles.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And as uh you know superintendent explained, it's probably going to be expense in the first year, so we might not have any impact whatsoever, you know.
Okay.
That's nice.
Oh yeah, they're getting deadlines.
Yes, so.
It's used for the replacement cycles, and they'll be, it'll be, yeah.
Yeah, no, it wasn't just my, like, extra surplus money, it already is allocated for something and will be used, yeah.
Um any councillors have questions or comments?
Just wondering, so this is just a fact where we are discussing, like, in the budget process and sort of u- using this money now for the Chromebooks so that we can then use the the seats later on, if the money becomes available, as Dr. Willet mentioned. Thanks.
Um any other questions, comments? Um I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
You shouldn't know the, there's the, sorry, there's actually not a resolution in the packet.
Oh, you're right.
So I came up with some language, if you want me to read it.
Okay, then.
It just says be resolved.
Yeah. Very simple.
Uh so I just wrote be resolved, with town town council hereby establishes an education technology initiative fund. Initiation, or initiative.
There is draft resolution, but with nothing.
So, did you get that? If that's okay.
Um I guess it'd be up to if a councillor wants to make that motion, I'm assuming it's okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Be resolved, town town council hereby establishes an education technology initiative fund. A problem, yeah.
Yeah.
When I make that motion or accept that motion?
I'm gonna say, I I made that motion.
So I made the motion that was just said I uh open it, is that okay?
Amongst least, it's the longest list we've got, yeah. Got it. Um is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, uh many additional discussion? No, uh councillor Butler?
Aye.
Councillor Moonan? Councillor Gudicke?
Aye.
Councillor Moran?
Aye.
Councillor Vivi?
Aye.
I'm an I as well, so yeses. Thank you, Dr. Willet. Right, um was this item eight, yeah, item eight four, consideration of a resolution to approve the revised ambulance fund policies and procedures. Um so for our packet, the attorney did take a look at what we had sent over and does have some suggestions. Um like, I don't know if you provide any additional context or if you wanted to tee this up?
No, I did, it's just like you said, these are responses from the town attorney. I know this is something you discussed previously, so um I know that John said he kind of talked about it at a previous meeting. I don't know if you want to add anything, let's about anything.
She sent us an email, four twenty six, and you see, he um he said the section below expenditure should say all E M S and or or fire rescue related items, not just E M S.
And where, sorry, where?
Okay, where it's uh, it it, he just slipped it, and I can let me see if I can, um it's D. Number D expenditures.
So it should say what?
Should say all E M S and or fire rescue related items.
Uh um what with sentences that, maybe if you could email it to councillor Rand, and I would be able to add.
Yeah, I can just over that.
Yeah.
Wrong.
Yep. Uh I'm going to get it.
Did you get it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you want in that letter D to including all fire events and or fire.
And or event.
So that changes the intent of the fund. So it's the ambulance fund, but is it the intent that it also now will also fund fire equipment as well?
That's what it, at least what Chief Laitel came, that's what he said it was already doing, and we didn't want to, if I were recalling correctly, we didn't want to overly strain his hands, because they are already.
Right.
There are, that's what I thought, right? Because when you would ask for, so just she is, you would ask for um or an accounting of the previous allocations for the fund, and it looked like it was being broadly used.
Right, and like when I realized that that very first time that in um rescue bill and fire marsh, like it actually had other things going into an ambulance fund that I don't think we were fully aware of. It's not a lot of money, but if it's.
Right, so do we, so.
Just talking about A.
And if the fire chief thinks that's.
I'm I'm actually, no, I'm talking about the letter D paragraph, which is what is being monitored. So do we want to say EMS and fire fund? Do we, do we, cause ambulance fund indicates people it's for ambulances. And it's, it's broad, it's it's basically an EMS fund, right, that that which is been used more broadly, and I don't know if that's something that we can even do.
Yeah, and I guess you have to look at E, cause it says exceptions to expenditures, and talks about the following town and fire departments, so I'm a little confused.
But I think also A would need to change the purpose. We just have to add it. It's, I think it's just, it's adding in what Chief Laitel. Oh, no, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, I think that's why we did E, because if they needed fix on something or another.
Yeah, and E, E makes that clear, right? Town and fire on a case-by-case basis, provided the expenses do not exceed a predetermined amount. Right, so that there, I mean, there's there's a, there's a um allowance for this item?
So it just just depends, so E requires the council to approve.
Right.
It's just whether
Right.
we're fine with that, Chief Laitel's fine with that.
Yeah, if you want to.
And and I'm I'm not opposing in concept to
Right.
given history that that was clear, I I just want to make sure that it's clear to any outside observers who might hear us talking about it.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, cause I know one of Jen's big things was, she felt uncomfortable restricted too much, so, yeah. I mean, yeah.
And I'm fine if we don't change the title too, as long as we fully explain to the public what it's for.
I think Jen has her hand up.
Uh yeah, councillor Buckler?
Hi, yeah, and Colleen's right. My my only concern is uh if we were being overly narrow um with the language, I don't want to tie the hands um of the town, of the fire department, to be able to use these funds for fire-related things. Um and my my concern was that there would be a situation that we're not anticipating um that if the language was too narrow or it it made the fire department or the town jump through hoops to be able to get funds uh approved for other fire-related things. Um I I I just, I feel like it would be overly burdensome for the fire department, um excuse me. So I uh, my biggest concern is I I don't want to make this more work for the fire department to be able to use these funds for for whatever purpose they want to use them for. Um I think how it stands right now, uh without the policy, and I'm not against a policy at all, but I think right now they can pretty much use the funds for anything fire-related. I just would be cautious about um narrowing it too much uh or or putting too many restrictions or too uh many procedural moves in place um so that they can use the funds how they want to.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
So given the suggestion that um paragraph D be modified slightly to say related to emergency medical service EMS comma and or fire, is that, is that what we're, the the sentence before the last?
And or fire rescue-related items.
And or fire rescue-related items, it does that, does that address your concern, Jen? Because that takes, that that basically opens that up to use for either or without.
I think if, right, I think if we eliminate having to go to council um to approve the the use of the funds for for, I mean, anything encompassing fire department, I think that would would be the least respect, restrictive way of 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 implementing this policy. Um I I just, I, you know, fire department is is not my my thing. I can't, I am sure there's things I can't even think of or anticipate that they might need to use these funds for. And I don't want to, you know, halt using these funds because we have to go to town council, get approval for you know, something else that's not just listed in this policy. So I think if you, if you have a wider net, um that's kind of all encompassing, I think that would be helpful for Chief Laitel and and any future chief uh going forward.
Oh, uh oh, sorry, go ahead. No, 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 it's good.
Um thanks, Jen, but we have a s- there's a spending public, if there's a certain amount that still has to come to council, it can't just right, if it's a certain amount.
Check out for capital expenditures?
Any, like, I think, well, that, this stuff would be.
Right, right.
Right, so say if it's, is it twenty thousand dollars, it has to come to council for approval first.
So the this uh capital projects comes to you every year, so you probably see it.
Right.
We spend.
But we get additional things throughout the year that come up.
Correct, so if we reach the threshold of the general fund.
One half, one percent?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we need a one.
The calculation, we have a check tally sheet that we keep a track of any appropriations removed from a graded budget, which is general fund or capital. And then if we reach that threshold, we have to come forward.
Yeah. Okay.
The transfer.
So that would trigger that anyway.
I just don't know what that amount, I thought it was like a certain.
No, it's it's a, it's a percentage. I think it's one half, one percent of the budget. So it was, we changed it at the last charter revision commission because it was a set amount. Uh but that gets outdated really quickly, so it to um peg it to like uh inflation, we set it at a percentage of the budget.
Just how that came up. Then my other thing is, the whole, the other big purpose of it was not to spend it down a certain amount money, cause as I've mentioned many times, that the number's coming down and it goes up, it just depends, and I think that was really the big purpose of having fun, was to make sure or just being responsible, we're not letting it dip too below and above. Cause that is like I said, like there was a time, like I mentioned on meet-in, that one year it did dip significantly, and I shared it everything with that, and it looks like the number will be back up, but that was a big purpose that I was concerned about.
And if I can suggest, um well, and I remember that conversation, because we were, they were talking about the capital projects. And when we do present five-year projects, we usually do um forecasting of those use of those funds for the five years. I was saying the truth. And um so that's where you saw that seventy-five K thing or something going low or something even maybe lower.
Yeah.
Um but then I read it num- numbers like a month ago, it looked way better. Um we're not gonna be that low.
Right, I figured, I'm just saying that.
It's just that it's a variable, yes, but you you're gonna see that every year, so I'm just making that like it's we very transparent on what looks like based on our five-year capital plan. So it's not like, you know, suddenly it's gone down.
No, I understand, it's just.
Right, I understand that.
So I guess, no question, question or comment, but if Chief Laitel had a comment, I think that respectfully, like Jen says, we're not department experts, go back and maybe clarify that and let him you know, then come back to us.
Yeah, that's, that that was maybe my suggestion, was to red, just like redline it in like Chief Laitel or, you know, with the language Chief Laitel's talking about, so I think that would go into subsection D.
Mm-hmm.
And then the lawyer and me like would like to add something to subsection A, um but uh you know, just mentioning that it's also, as he say, all EMS and or fire rescue-related items.
Yeah.
Um I think that would accomplish, I mean, and and obviously, I guess that you can look at it and see that that would accomplish what he was thinking. Um but I thi- think it would.
Yeah, have a another look.
Yeah, why why, yeah, why don't we table it and then?
Yeah.
Well, well, I haven't seen that line, but we can, yeah, we can add it to the red line. Yeah, why, why, yeah, why don't we table it and then, well, I haven't seen that line version. We can, yeah, we can add it to the redline version and
Okay.
And bring it back. Yeah, it just came at the end of the day, so, yeah.
Yeah. Yes. It, and I, and I just have one more question. So the threshold amount in paragraph C, um, it, it doesn't give, it, it basically says threshold amount from such sources it deems appropriate and leaves it to the council. So was there a stated threshold amount somewhere? Cause it's, it's not here. Okay, so, so the council, go ahead.
Well, she, the, the threshold she was talking about is where, when it requires uh a public hearing. So that's what you were talking about, right? So we have, we do additional appropriations.
Right, and.
So that's the threshold that was changed. So that's what she was talking about, the public hearing, so.
Okay.
Um.
I think the threshold amount so doesn't go below a certain number, but yeah.
Yeah, but it says, so this says in B two um, this proactive measure ensures that the fund balance remains above the council's established threshold in paragraph C. But there is no established threshold in paragraph C, other than the fact that
You said for top.
there, it will be determined from time to time by the town council. So I didn't know if that is something that we have done?
I don't think so, because this is a new policy.
Okay.
Um, so we would have to have a separate item at some point to discuss and decide on a threshold, which I came prepared for this tonight, but I'm tabled, so.
So we wanna, do, you are, would you like to see that language also, or is that something else you would like to discuss separately?
I think it makes sense to bring it back to Chief Laitel.
Okay.
Um, and that
Yeah.
Um, then maybe we rewrite the agenda for next time. I can also add an item to set that threshold. Um, we, we did get
Okay.
um, a list of recent expenditures from our finance department that we've taken out of this fund, so.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Um, if you don't have that yet, I can forward it
Okay.
um, to everybody, um, so that everybody can kind of think about what would make sense for number.
Was, um, if you were asking, I, it's like, I, I, I feel like I remember speaking else. Was the language that we have now for the threshold amount in subsection C? Was that something that like Rick had proposed, how, how we would handle subsection C? Doesn't even remember.
He changed a lot.
He changed a lot in that one, I think, I left a threshold amount for us to discuss.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Yeah.
Hmm. Before it went to Attorney Conte and then he took that out and kind of made it.
Yeah.
The time to like.
You guys decide whenever you want it.
Yeah, the time to time thing.
Yeah, which maybe he, I don't think, maybe he misread it, thought it was our intent to say this.
Yeah. Yeah, we can, then we can clarify it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think when, was there, I can't remember. If it was a percentage that was used, like how much is in it? Fifteen percent, I don't know. I feel like seventy or eighty thousand dollars was the number, I don't know. But I don't know how you did that math, I would need, you, you have to deal with it.
You mean, you mean in one of the drafts you're proposing or somewhere else?
I just thought it came up at one point.
I think I might have said that, just like, that sounds about right, but I didn't really definitely thought, think in behind it, um.
I don't know how you.
So you have answers. Yeah. Yeah, I, I had a couple thoughts upon that, although we can get it to that later. But it sounds like the will of the council is to go back to the drawing board and ask questions about section D. And then maybe also just click clarification upon Attorney Conte's opinion, like, is it his opinion that we should just make it so that the council sets the threshold time to time, or is it fine if we put in an actual note there?
Yeah.
Um, and we can bring it back.
Yeah.
Wait it through next time. Any other additional questions or comments upon this? Um, that brings us to item B five, which is appointments to vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions. Um, Council Moran, do you wanna pick this one?
Yeah, we just have one reappointment. Um, so as you recall, the uh technology board wanted to continue in existence. All of their um uh terms expired at the same time. So Sarah Beth was, uh, we approved a bunch of them that Sarah Beth had heard back from on our last meeting. Um, an additional person has now responded that he would like to also renew his term on the tech board, George uh Teckbert. Um, so this would just be uh someone who's was on the, the board and just got back to us that he does want to in fact extend his term. So this would just be reappointing him to the technology advisory board.
Thank you. Do you have thoughts or comments? Right, I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Mr. Eckbert to the technology board. So, so second? Second. Right, any discussion? No? Uh, Councilor Butler?
Aye.
Councilor Noonan? Councilor Yudichak?
Aye.
Councilor Moran?
Aye.
Councilor Bibi?
Aye.
And I as well, so he is reappointed. Okay, there is no new business tonight. Um, report of the town manager. Um, Mike, did you have anything you wanted to spike out?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Reports available, if you wanna read it, if you want, welcome to read it. I guess any questions, anybody who'd like to direct to our acting town manager today?
I do, I can read too.
Okay. I guess I will, I will mention one thing, um, now that you think of it. So Bruce Wall, Watt is leaving, it was mentioned, and he's a longtime rec director, he's been here for over a decade. Um, uh, when he was hired, it was a big challenge, there was a lot we, he had to do and took it on his shoulders and did a great job uh over the last decade. So we wish him, we're gonna miss him, we wish him well in the new opportunity, but um, just wanted to thank him for his service. Absolutely.
He quit his job out yet?
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah, we put it out right away. Um, and it's uh closed on the twelve, so uh we should.
And the applications were?
Yes, we have, we've gotten some. So uh there's some options, so it's good to have options, so we'll, we'll start looking at those uh now. So we can get some on as board as soon as we can. Mentioned in last meeting, big congratulations and for the new opportunity for him and um, thank you for all the work you've done to the town.
Yeah.
Any else? Right, um, that brings us item eleven, adoption of minutes. We have a special meeting minutes set and regular meeting minutes set um to approve. So a motion to adopt those minutes. So, so, second, Councilor Noonan, uh, may discussion? Uh, Councilor Butler?
Aye.
Councilor Noonan?
Aye.
Councilor Yudichak?
Aye.
Councilor Moran?
Aye.
Councilor Bibi?
Aye.
And I as well, so the minutes are adopted. Correspondents to council, Councilor Yudichak.
I have an email in front, um, one email actually too, because one came on today, apologize. Um, one email was regarding the senior center position. And we just got one today regarding um appreciation for um, we gave my um, um, DPW, that was some more, I'm sorry. I just got the email, appreciation to DPWs for some work they just did today. Right, alright.
Um, chairperson's report. I do not have chairperson's report, just glad that we do have an adopted budget. Um, so, uh, town will be able to enter the, the fiscal year. Um, knowing what their, their spending is, it's, it's definitely a tough year, but we are uh committed in process and um have a budget. Right, uh, go to communications and petitions from council persons. So are any communications?
I have two.
Yeah, Councilor Yudichak?
So first, thank you to the registered voters and poll workers for their hard work uh over the last three referendums, right?
Right.
Right. Especially with two new registers, I think, and with the new ballot boxes, whatever you call, they did a lot. Um, I think they did fantastic. And the um poll workers were great. Alright, so tonight I'm gonna announce my resignation from the town council effective June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. I've been wrestling with resigning for several months, weighing numerous factors. Ultimately, the most significant reason for my decision is to prioritize my mental health and devote my time to my family, which is essential for my own well, well-being. The choice was not made lightly, as I deeply value my role and contributions here, but I recognize that my health and family must come first. As a council member, I've been involved in key initiatives that enhance our community. Some of these initiatives include include revising four and sixty to provide assistance to seniors, implementing a backup ambulance to improve emergency services, and promoting accessibility improvements throughout the town. Additionally, I have supported numerous other projects funded through grants and ARPA. Together, these efforts are essential in establishing a strong foundation for our future investments in the benefit of all of town. As the Chair of the ARPA Subcommittee, I love the committee in the allocation of four million dollars in federal granted funds to get in a bipartisan manner. By prioritizing these fiscal responsibility, I ensure the efficient use of funds to enhance services and infrastructure. Notable initiatives include capital items for the Board of Education, replacing another tennis court in Cardinal Park, funding for our backup ambulance, DPW trucks, and new parks facilities filled in, ADA improvements at crossfarms, and recreation program discount, um, discounts. These, uh, these projects represent a significant investment in our community's future and were funded without relying on residents' property taxes. As the Chair of the Firehouse Subcommittee, I have had the privilege of working with a dedicated team focused on addressing the needs of fire stations. Last fall, we successfully rebuilt Station Three Forty, which now includes essential upgrades, meets ADA requirements, and addresses the operation needs of the community. The Subcommittee is currently finalizing renovation options and costs for Stations One Forty and Four Forty, focusing on the most critical needs of these two stations before starting the renovations. Over the last three and a half years, while serving in the town council, I had a pleasure to serve as liaison to the recreational advisory board, the commission of people with disabilities, and the mental health task force. I want to express my heart, heartfelt thanks to the residents of Talon for placing their trust in me to serve our community. I'm also grateful for Town Manager Foley and his staff for their dedication of to Talon and to both former and common counselors with whom I have served with. Most importantly, I want to acknowledge my family and closest friends who have supported me during my no- most challenging times on council and allowed me to dedicate countless hours to serve in the public. Serving the town of Talon for eight and a half years in different elected roles, have been a true honor. I mean, I'm deeply grateful for the opportunity to make a positive difference in our community.
Councilor Yudichak for all your hard work. You certainly have a good legacy to leave of the council. I do.
Ten budgets, ten budgets later.
I think we all had too many referendums in the white belt, um, for, for the amount of years we served, but, um, you know, but uh worked a lot with you on the ARPA committee and the Firehouse Subcommittee especially, and obviously, um, even before that, Mental Health Task Force. I'm on the floor today, so definitely a lot of, a lot of good work.
Charlie's gonna be fantastic.
So, I, I, uh, well, this, this caught me by surprise, but I will absolutely, I, it has been a, a pleasure to work with you um, on the Firehouse Subcommittee and uh I know we spent a lot of, a lot of hours, um, you, me and Jacob and, and a lot of late nights, so.
Charlie was like, so, the contract, the contract, I still think of them, but that was great.
So, thank you, thank you.
But yeah, I picked the end of the month, so I'm just gonna show the two meetings next week to say hi to everybody, the last council meeting.
Right, right. Okay.
Let's Democrats do their thing, that, find somebody.
Okay.
Completely, so that's why I picked.
Mm-hmm.
I kept going back and forth, but I wanted to do this, so.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, I wanted to say something quickly. I, I remember when we started this process, um, just seeing your name everywhere. Um, you know, it makes sense why Council Moran was always right by your side, you know, popularly. Um, but uh I was nervous because I didn't know how much we would align. And, um, you know, come to find out, I just really appreciate how forthcoming you've always been. Um, I think a very effective communicator and um I was happy to find out who I think we did have in common. And um, I really always enjoyed having uh your, your fervent share with public safety and uh, you did a good job.
Thank you, Alex.
Yeah.
I'll just echo that, uh, I, you know, also hold a card, but um, I'll just say, um, you know, as Alex mentioned, you can't pay, it's maybe the first time I ever ran for anything, so, you know, a lot, a lot.
A lot.
And so I, you know, we got to know each other, we went through that, so, um, as everyone said.
Maybe if I was already so what?
Right. We, yeah, um, you've added a lot, you know, both on this council and obviously at Board of Ed before that, and so I think the town is fortunate to have had you, um, I'm just not having you here, but um, I'm, uh, uh I'm, I'm glad you're doing whatever, whatever makes you happy.
Thank you. Right, well, we almost got top half, but any other grab?
One more thing, Tom, too. Yeah.
This is super anticlimactic after that, but I think some, I, maybe it was George, somebody mentioned tax relief programs. I just wanted to mention, I think you and I have an upcoming meeting, we just preliminarily be thinking about things, so I just wanted to
Yeah.
put that out there that that is something that's.
Yeah, maybe it's for the record, we are, um, I think, uh, Finance Director and Town Manager, we're done doing some research and then, um Council Moran, or Vice Chair Moran and myself are going to just have like a
General.
conversation about it and then bring it to council at some point, uh, for sure, obviously, it's more in topic, but.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Uh, certainly this year among any years, it's a very important conversation to have.
Yeah. Just wanted to.
Yeah.
Uh, make sure you just have it out there that we are, it's something that the council's mindful of, absolutely.
Just want to add, I just wanted to thank DPW for adding, um, a groundswalk adjacent to the eighty-nine, um home.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, yeah, it's been a challenge for me to realize that trying to get things done, you know, any good town might, might seem like running in sand at times and doesn't come fast, and I think um, prior members had commented that that could have been worked for a while. Um, so I certainly have a couple things left to, to shore off that I think are uh in the future. But having that done and, you know, making uh the town center a little safer for those to walk and enjoy, um, is appreciated as well. So I just wanted to thank DPW and all those involved.
Absolutely. This is one by, like, St. Matthews that way. Okay, I didn't notice that was new. Anything else?
Um, so I want to, um, uh, parrot, uh, Alex's appreciation of the Memorial Day parade. I think it was exceptionally well organized. Um, and probably one of the better ceremonies I've ever attended. Um, really well done, really dignified. Um, and having it on the green meant that there were a lot of people and families that could also stay, um, and did stay. So that was, that was, I was wondering how that was gonna work out, and I think it worked out really well.
Did they just turn around, like?
Right here.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, right there, right, so it was really short, but it was, but it was, um, you, you, I mean, there were a lot of people that were able to assemble on the green, so that was really nice. Um, yeah, I remember when we used to march from the high school all the way to the cemetery. Um, and, um, that was a, I mean, it was fine, it, you know, it was.
Which, which cemetery?
We went to the downside of Mill.
Crazy. Oh, wow, that is a little.
Yeah, yeah, so it started at the high school and came all the way up seventy-four through the green and then down.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
First high school where it currently is?
You're, you're talking the older.
Yes, actually, people can walk that far.
No, I mean, I know, I was like.
And the high school marching band in full regalia was playing their instrument all the way, so, um, but yeah, we, the, and but, but by the time people got to the cemetery, there weren't a lot of people left that went to the cemetery.
To warm up.
There were a lot more people at the cer- ceremony, so it was very nice. Um, and also again, thank you to Yolita and the staff for the support that you gave us during the budget process. Um, it was, you know, it was a lot of meetings, it was a lot of late, and it was a lot of, okay, let's pause this and while, there was a lot of pressure to, to give us numbers and such, so, um, thank you.
Welcome.
Big thank you. Yeah, some late nights, but it was, it was important that we, we took the time and definitely appreciate that.
Yeah.
We just spent twenty-four hours together three, three evenings, I think.
Yeah, sounds right.
At six point eighteen maybe.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, anyone else? Um, that brings us to public list of participation with a three-minute limit. Um, vote to the room first. Anyone who wants to be a public comment?
Sure. George Alurchis Chamberlain. I just like to point out one thing. Personally, I believe we only need one flag. Uh, our flag represents all of us. In, so, maybe a town flag, maybe a state flag, we all have our flag. I think that's the only flag we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll go online. Is there anyone online who'd like to speak? I wouldn't go back to the room, but, good.
Well.
Clear the room. Go online. Alright, I think I'll close out public participation, um is there any objection to adjournment at eight eleven P M? Seeing any objection, we are adjourned at eight eleven P M, thank you.